Welcome back to another episode of Clarksville's Conversation. I'm here with my buddy Katie Gamble and Chris Smith from Five Star Radio in Clarksville Now. And we're here to talk to some city council candidates for Ward 12. We want to talk about some of the issues and get their thoughts. So let's turn it over to Chris for a quick little introduction for that.
Hey, everybody. So we have six candidates running in Ward 12. The candidates are Tricia Butler, John Lockwood, Joe Shakina, Guy Stanford, Adam Walker, and David Webb. To see information about each of the candidates, we've got biographical info on them on ClarksvilleNow.com. And for this, we're just going to be talking about the issues. So let's get started. First, we'll talk about growth. And we'll start with you, Tricia Butler. What does good growth look like to you in the city of Clarksville?
I promised it wouldn't take me 20 minutes to turn my mute off. So I think that the biggest thing about growth in Clarksville is that everyone has to get comfortable with the idea that it's not optional anymore. We are growing. At the city council meeting this past Thursday, Garrett spoke on how not building homes or building homes, it's affecting our cost of living around here. So I think that the things that I would like to see happen for growth to be what we call smart growth and mitigated so that citizens aren't suffering the consequences in their quality of life is backfill into areas of the city rather than the urban sprawl that we see. And that's all I got. That's my idea.
You are right. We need to get used to the fact that it's growing.
All right. And John Lockwood, what does good growth look like to you?
To me, good growth is having a plan. We already have a 2020 to 2040 growth plan. And when you look at the projected growth areas, like for our ward around Exit 8, Rossview Road area, they've already projected more housing out there off of Tyler Town Road. They've doing things smartly. They added a fire station, Station 11 on Tyler Town. They have new subdivisions being built. And as Trish said, it's not going to stop. Growth is inevitable. I think smart growth, though, is planning and being proactive rather than reactive. I'd rather see us, if we're going to plan to grow, set up, do we need more fire stations? Do we need another EMS station? Growing out at Exit 8, when you go into Farmington and those areas, there's already Station 12, another EMS that was put in as a gesture with Hancock Tire and things. So we've planned ahead. We just need to stay on track with planning ahead as we grow.
All right. And Joe Shakina, what does good growth look like to you?
First of all, I'd say good morning to all and excuse my I was actually on the Presidential Search Committee for the next president of Austin P. So that went kind of behind a little bit. And I'm just getting able to, just being able to come on this. But what growth looks like to me in this city? As previous speakers have alluded to, that the train is in motion. The population is increasing and so is the demand. I mean, not just demand for housing, but demand for services to support the population. So for me, growth is all about actually getting with all of those entities, those support structures, getting feedback from them. And then having these committees, then getting feedback from the residents themselves, from the voters, from the constituencies. And let's figure out how to actually make this thing work because we can't stop it. It's a beautiful thing for Clarksville. Just like we normally do with the business industry. We talk to the businesses about growth and what does it look like for them in industrial park area? So what does it look like in the residential areas for us? That's my take on it. But again, like I say, it's not going to stop. But all the support and services that we need to have in place, that's a big concern for me. And that's something that I would actually address with different, not only just the residents, but as an example with the street department. What does growth look like for them in different other entities of public service? Thank you.
All right. And Guy Stanford, what does good growth look like to you?
First of all, I want to say good morning as well and thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. I'm also speaking on the concept of growth because there's so many different things that we can talk about of what the city needs. But I want to speak on the concept of growth. So to me, the concept of growth means to make an impact that everybody can appreciate. Just more opportunities and more things for people to be proud of and more things that we can look forward to. Also, not being stagnant, always having an opportunity to grow even with a tremendous amount of growth. As Tricia stated, that it's really not a choice. The city's going to grow. Growth is the opportunity to get better and never be satisfied. But in the midst of that growth, we want to celebrate the small victories so we can appreciate the growth that we have. Growth looks like to me, like the image of growth is more confidence, more financial gain, more time with family, and just a variety of opportunities that are limitless. Growth is the epitome of lifting up others so that they can grow and do the same thing for somebody else. So I feel like ultimately, growth is really just nonstop. There is no such thing as too much growth. So I feel like the main thing is just for us to appreciate those small victories and find ways to continue to grow and collect the data from the community.
All right. And Adam Walker, how about you? What does good growth look like to you in Clarksville?
Yeah, well, first of all, I also would like to say good morning and thank you guys for putting this on. It's a wonderful opportunity to be able to bring some transparency into the city council races. But with that being said, I, growth is a huge, I want to say a project more or less. It's, and I think we can all agree that growth here in Clarksville isn't inevitable. You're not stopping it. But with that being said, we have to create an environment that promotes growth, that stimulates it. I look at it more as a cycle. So you have people that move into a city. And then you see companies, whether that's corporate companies, mom and pop shops, franchisees, that see that there's a large influx of population. So they want to bring their business to that city. And then it cycles through. You have more people that see that these companies are moving in. There's more opportunities, more things to do, more places to eat, more places to shop. But as someone that believes in manable government, we have to provide a environment that is welcoming to those companies or to those individuals. So, you know, we need to make sure that we have proper leadership, that we have fiscal responsibility. We have, you know, there's a sense of morality when it comes into, you know, leading the growth as an elected official in the city. Let's not tax residents to death. Let's not tax companies to death. I think we can all agree, though, you know, we have to have tax dollars to keep up the infrastructure, to keep the lights on, to keep the water running. But there needs to be a healthy balance so that, you know, I think that's more where the fiscal responsibility comes in, where we need to really buckle down and make sure that we're not wasting money on this project or this project, but more focusing on the essentials, which I'm not necessarily saying that's what we're doing. But, you know, as future time goes along, if it can happen, it will happen.
All right. And David Webb, what does good growth look like to you in Clarksville?
We haven't seen it in quite some time. And as a matter of fact, Tricia Butler, she hit the nail on the head with that one. From a sustainability point, it's not there, just like the new subdivisions that were built across from Tyler Town Road on the north side. You know, throwing up houses, apartment complexes, so on and so forth. That area actually flooded. Water coming up to people's back porches and we're not doing it right here. We do have a sustainability committee to some degree. But we need to do a better job about planning, in my opinion. And Trish, I got to give you that when you did a good job, gal. That's it.
All right. And so, yeah, Charlie and Katie.
So with growth comes traffic issues. And you know, that's a hot topic and everybody is concerned about traffic. So as a city councilman, what are some of the things that you would do to help with traffic issues, not just in your district, but also in Clarksville? And I think this time, let's start with Joe.
Joe, you're on mute.
There you go.
All right, all right. For me, when it comes to traffic, some of the things I look at, and I actually drive a lot of the roads now. Safety is going to be number one issue. What are the safety concerns when it comes to commuting? And not just for our workers, but for the elderly people, for the walkers, for the bus travelers. What are all those safety things that we need to start considering? And then to build on that, just developing courses of action to actually start engaging the right people, the planning commission, the developers. So when neighborhoods are developed, what does the transportation requirements, what does the road structures need to be? Versus an afterthought, you're getting these things built. And then there's a huge flow of traffic or overflow of traffic and we have problems. So let's start thinking on the front end of that. What does traffic need to be? Look, what does it need to look like? And then start holding people accountable. Right? Can we hold these developers accountable prior to these developments? And along with traffic, your walking areas, right? Some neighborhoods don't have walking areas, just like some don't have parks and things like that. So we have to think about all populations within the Clarksville community, not just the vehicle drivers. But we have to think about everybody when it comes to traffic. But again, like I said, the first thing is it's got to be safe. We got to fix a lot of the things that are not, that are not up to standard right now. And I know on Rossview Road, there are some spots on Rossview Road that the road actually just, the edge of the road and there's nothing there. So if you just run off just a little bit with incoming traffic, someone not paying attention, well, you're going to be stuck or you're going to hit something and flip over. So a lot of little things like that that needs to happen. And also, when I come to traffic, some of the neighborhoods I've been in, they talk about speed bumps. They've been trying to get speed bumps for eight years. And that hasn't happened. Or the lights, you know, trying to get the lights fixed because it's just so dark at night. You've got two or three lights in a row that are down. So all that stuff comes back into traffic, right? Is it safe? Those are some safety concerns for me.
Thanks, Joe. Trish, what are some of your thoughts on traffic and some of the issues that we're having in Clarksville?
So I'm going to give you an answer that's probably not very popular. I actually, and I live right off of Wilma Rudolph. And I'm annoyed, I'm 100% annoyed with everyone else. But I've also worked in Nashville and I've also lived in Pittsburgh while I went to school. And our traffic, annoying as it may be, is not all that bad. I think that obviously, we need, this goes back to smart growth. We need to take traffic into consideration when we're building. That's a part of that planning. I live in a neighborhood, it's called Meadows of Hearthstone. We actually have one entrance and exit. And my neighborhood is not the only thing that matters to me. But we have one entrance and exit in and out. And we had a fatality on that road. And we were not able to get in and out right after work, get to our kids for like six hours. So I went to Jeff Tyndall and I've talked to him about creating some interconnectivity between the neighborhoods. I think that that is something that is important. And in knocking doors and talking to some of the voters and residents in the area, they, they want Trenton widened, they want Rossview widened, and an Exit 6. So those are the things, the ideas that I get out in the community are what I would, I would probably focus on first. And because we have so many state roads, I have no problem knocking doors, driving to Nashville, doing whatever I need to do to work on that end of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. So Adam, what are some of your thoughts on traffic?
So right off the bat, one thing that I realize is that I would be one voice on the city council. Okay? So individually by myself, I wouldn't be able to get a whole lot done unless I'm working in conjunction with my fellow city councilmen or city councilwomen. But the issues that I see is, it boils back over with, with growth, is that people are coming. There's development that is happening. So we have to keep up with that growth. And we run into these issues where we have a lot of state roads here in Clarksville. So we have to go work with the state and it takes X amount of years before we get, you know, funds that are appropriated to assist us with those developments. But I think the biggest thing that we can do when it comes to roads is being preemptive with our development. So I'm not saying, you know, after a traffic study, it seems that we only need two lanes, build four lanes. That would be excessive. But we need to have at least the land purchased or the, not necessarily the funds because of how appropriations works, but the ability to, once that, we see that going. If we see that, you know, for example, we'll say Rossview Road is expanding X amount of people a year in that area and it's going to need an expansion. When we saw those trends of those growth, we needed to have the ability, instead of having to fight for that land or have to go to the process of purchasing that, purchasing that land or whatever it may be, already have that in place. You know, I use 24, for example. There's a lot of controversial ideas with 24. A lot of people think that we should just purchase the land for the third lane and put the third lane in. I, on the other hand, is, you know, we can put the third lane in, but we need to have the land already in our possession for the fourth lane. Because that's just going to add another step into continuing our development when it comes to infrastructure. But besides that, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Adam. So John, what are your thoughts?
I've lived in Clarksville for 27 years and I've watched the city grow. I've watched the streets change. Again, I live in Ward 12. I drive on Wilma Rudolph daily, Warfield Boulevard. I've seen some great things happen, like on Oakland Road, they widened the road, straightened it out because our first responders could not get to where we live. But as many of the others have said, if we're more proactive in, when we build, do subdivisions to make sure that we have widening up roads, we have sidewalks. Tyler Town Road, for example, there is no sidewalk. We've had fatalities where people have been hit and killed by cars on Tyler Town Road because there's nowhere to walk. Subdivision I live in has no sidewalks. The city changed their policy a few years back where builders now required to put in sidewalks when they build new subdivisions. With, with growth, it's just inevitable. The more people you have, the more cars you're going to have. If you don't believe me, go down Wilma Rudolph about 5 o'clock in the afternoon. It's hard to get around. The city's done a good job with Warfield Boulevard, expanding it and making it better. There's just other projects we have to continue building. We have to continue looking beyond what we see right now. One of my statements to everyone I've talked to is you have to be more proactive than reactive. When we're looking at that building or, or new things we want to do, how's it going to affect the city as a whole? There's other areas in the city, not just Ward 12, Providence Boulevard, Fort Kemba Boulevard. They have a lot of fatalities there, people trying to walk across the street. Just a lot to look at, as Joe said earlier, safety. Making sure our citizens are safe, not just in our ward, but in the entire city. So safety to me is a big thing. There, there are ways we could reroute traffic. But it just takes a lot of planning and a committee that's willing to sit down. We do a lot of studies in past administrations. We would do studies and never act on them. We just spend a lot of money for nothing. So if we're going to do a study, let's act on it. And, you know, take the advice that we're given, use it and do something that embeders the whole city. Thank you.
Thanks, John. So David, what is your thoughts on traffic?
This has been an issue with Clarksville that's been growing exponentially. In my opinion, when I've been out door knocking and I've spoken with, with the people and they agree with this, I know this isn't going to be a hot commodity with those that are developing the land. But what I would like to do is propose an ordinance to be passed to where those land developers, that land appraised at 10% value or sold at 10% value, that goes back into a development fund, which maintains our streets, which also, you can use it for road widening. If sidewalks need to be installed and like Jonathan Lockwood said, you know, with these new neighborhoods that are requiring sidewalks to be built. But, you know, for the, the older neighborhoods, you know, they're grandfathered in and that's an issue, just like on Tyler Town. There's no shoulder of the road. We have our active duty military jogging out there, doing their PT. We've got kids riding their bicycles down there, going to the Dollar General to get, you know, a Coke and a candy bar. And somebody's going to end up getting killed. We have to address this issue. It starts with the developers. It does. It's poor planning. We're way behind, way behind. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, David. And Guy, you're next.
So I'm big on speaking to the people directly who are going to be impacted, excuse me, impacted by the projects that we decide to do as a city, as far as the ward projects go. I feel like collecting data and doing real research is literally the most secure way of minimizing bad things from happening and putting citizens in uncomfortable situations. Some neighborhoods need a sidewalk, of course. Some neighborhoods need speed bumps, et cetera. Some neighborhoods just need safety projects done as a whole. But I feel like, you know, we as the, as the city professionals, we have to present these ideas to the citizens, explain to them why it makes sense. But we want to also see what they have to say about it. Just so we can really get, get the perspective from the people who are going to be impacted by it. I think we'll have some amazing ideas, but that doesn't always equate to success or comfort for the people that are impacted by it. So that's why I believe collecting data is so important, as well as research with the ideas that we want to implement. The developers are going to play the most important part, though. I mean, that's obviously the elephant in the room. They have to actually enable anything that we're talking about, regardless of what we decide to do. So we have to find the best developers. You know, a business approach to all of this is, is very important. If local developers won't get it done, then we got to go somewhere else. You know what I'm saying? We don't got to just work with local developers just because we want to get it done the best way possible and get the max amount of, you know, return in our investment. You know what I'm saying? In terms of safety, in terms of comfort. And we want to do it in the most efficient way, cost wise, too, regardless of where the money's coming from. For Wilma Rudolph, I feel like we all know that there needs to be some type of infrastructure project done to minimize the traffic there. But it doesn't really just stop there with infrastructure projects with Wilma. I think a big part of it is spreading out the businesses throughout the city of Clarksville. As of right now, most of the important things that needs to be done, you have to go to Wilma Rudolph to do it. I mean, that's cool because, I mean, we have a strip that we can be proud of in Clarksville. But when you're in a rush, you're not really thinking about that. I mean, you're just trying to get to your destination. So as we continue to grow Clarksville, I feel like we should put businesses in a few different places. I feel like that'll help a lot of the traffic on the busiest part of Clarksville. I feel like the infrastructure projects won't have to be as dramatic because we definitely can't stop the city from growing. But if we start spreading things out, we won't have to do infrastructure projects every three to five years, every time we get another 10, 20, 30,000 people or whatever the number is. So that's what I feel like we can do as far as the, the growth of the busiest parts in town. We got to take a business approach and start thinking about how we can spread things out. Because right now, you kind of have to go to Wilma for most of what you're trying to do. We do have to do some infrastructure projects for sure, whatever that is. I mean, like I said, I can give ideas. I can, you know, go through a checklist and name ideas. But it's got to be data to support it. So we got to do research. We got to talk to people.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
All right. Well, you know, we've talked, we hear a lot about growth and traffic. But with growth comes the potential for crime. So let's talk about how you would address crime in Clarksville. And let's, let's start with David.
I appreciate it. With crime, obviously with exponential growth, it's going to increase regardless because we're, we're adding numbers to the town. I took the time to reach out to the Clarksville Police Department along with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. And I've spoken with active law enforcement officers, those retired. In my opinion, they're doing a, they're doing a really fine job. The communication is there between the two agencies. And with that being said, Clarksville Police Department, you know, they, they have, I believe it's 326, 327 active law enforcement officers already on the force. And with growth, they will continue to add more. We've got another thing that curbs crime, it starts with our youth. You know, with shop with a cop, with our, our people, coffee with a cop. There are so many programs that engage with the community. That's a good thing. We haven't seen the issues like up in Nashville and across the nation here in Clarksville. So as far as crime, I appropriately believe that they're handling that to the best of their ability. We have high, highly trained, high caliber officers on the force. And to them, I'd just like to say thank you for your service and y'all keep doing a good job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you for that. Adam, let's, let's move over to you. How would you address crime in Clarksville?
So first of all, the, I, I think crime really boils down to a couple of things. I think happiness and economic status has a lot to do with crime as well. Now, the government can't create happiness. But at the same time, that's where we can promoting an environment that is enjoyable for folks as well. And I agree with David, it also starts with our youth, you know? I personally have been a victim of a crime twice since I've lived in Clarksville. I've had my vehicle broken into twice in two different locations that I've lived at. Luckily, nothing was stolen. I don't keep anything valuable in my vehicle. But it's obvious that it is an issue and with growth, again, I agree with David, as growth increases, that's going to be an issue. But when it comes to the Clarksville Police Department and the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, they are some of the finest individuals in, in this nation. They're doing such a tremendous job. It, it really comes down to a sense of morality. Now, I think that people that have made the decision that they're going to do the crime, that's when, you know, they're going to be caught, they're going to be arrested, they're going to serve their time, or however the judge decides to serve, you know, that punishment. Whereas focusing on people that are in hardships, you know, I think connecting with a law enforcement officer is so important. I've been pro-blue my entire life, but I remember specifically being 15 and 16. I grew up down in the Brentwood area, you know, every time a cop behind me, you know, I think everyone gets that sense of, oh no, am I doing something wrong? Go get pulled over. And I think that's because I didn't have a sense of connection with my law enforcement. And I think that if we have these events and we can, you know, get with also private business owners to promote events, to have our law enforcement to come in and sit down and have lunch with a cop. You know, get to know who is serving your community. I think we need to have more neighborhood patrols. I think we need to promote more neighborhood watches. I think it's not just a police department issue. I don't think it's just a city of Clarksville government issue. I think the community needs to get involved, too. And if we want a safe city, we all have to work on this together.
All right. Thanks, Adam.
I love it.
Well, since Guy chimed in, let's get Guy to go next. Guy, tell us what you think about how you would address crime in Clarksville.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to interrupt. I just loved everything he just said. And, and I've been feeling like that for a while. So thank you for that. But, um, but just to kind of piggyback a little bit from what I was kind of going to, you know, address. So we do need real relationships built within the community for our law enforcement. It can't just be responding to calls, can't just be showing up when things happen. I do think they, they do give a good effort in trying to do that, though. I think they do do community trolls and they do, you know, go around and speak to people with the patrols. But I have spoke to a variety of safety professionals in town about ways of doing this and we came up with a lot of good ideas. But we do have to become a town where we have great relationships with law enforcement, city council members, city professionals, et cetera, in the communities. I'm someone who's taught in the community. I'm still coaching basketball in the community. So I do understand what our youth and, you know, and our young adults, you know, I understand what they think like, what they feel like. People don't necessarily feel safe. They just stay out of the way to minimize bad things from happening. That is a smart thing to do. But we do want people to feel safe, no matter what's going on here, because we do have a very unique town. Another huge thing I think that we need to do is bring more opportunities here so that people don't want to steal, people don't want to sell drugs. I think even 300 to 500 jobs every two to three years, that's 300 to 500 people that don't have to think about doing anything illegal to provide for their families. And lastly, I do feel like Mayor Pitts does a great job of making his presence felt, felt at key community events. I've seen him at several events that were very important to the community, especially the black community. I think we as potential city council members, law enforcement, the safety professionals, everybody should follow his lead to making our presence felt at, at events that are important to people.
All right. Thanks, Guy. Let's move over. Trish, give us, give us an idea of what you would do to address crime in Clarksville.
I'm not trying to sound like a hater. But, uh, so I released my platform in November. And one of my platform points was developing an interpersonal relationship between one of my platform points was developing an interpersonal relationship between ELEO and the community. And that's including like training events that, where the law enforcement officers will come out and, you know, tell people about things, just to, so they're not that scary guy who will get behind you and might pull you over, you know? Probably, again, unpopular, but I'm me. I think that we need our ELEO to focus on real crimes, and not crimes that, for instance, don't involve a victim, such as petty drug crimes. I'm not talking about opiates, I'm not talking about the guy that's dealing drugs on the school grounds, I'm talking about petty, petty amounts. I attended a neighborhood watch training session down at the precinct, and I think that that is absolutely something that we need to encourage our neighborhoods to do, so that citizens can take more responsibility. We're a highly transient community, and although we're a great community, and we have all the best people, a lot of times, that transient-ness causes us to be a little more separated. And I think that if we could get together and come together as a community with things involving crime, I think that that would help. And one of the ways is that I write a lot of crime stories, I read a lot of crime stories and affidavits, and I noticed that our big crimes, like the big scary ones, a lot of those are being perpetrated by people that come from outside the city and do their crime here. And I would like to sit down at a round table with some people that are much better subject matter experts than me at this, and figure out what it is that is tantalizing what about, about Clarksville, and start to mitigate those risks. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. John Lockwood, how would you address crime in Clarksville?
Guys, make it hard when you make me the last person to speak. Everyone else has already brought out a lot of good ideas. In the years that I've been in Clarksville, I've watched the police department change. When I first got here, the police department was going through lawsuits every couple of months, it seemed like. And then when Chief Ansley came on board, a lot of that changed, the morale came up. We see a lot better activity in the city with the police. The chief just recently retired, so now we're on it again. John Fuchon does a great job with the Sheriff's Department. I, I work with all of these entities, I've been a local pastor for the last 27 years, so I meet these guys, I'm having to go to court with somebody because of something that's happened. I speak with them about incidents that happen with assaults and things like that. We have a lot of crime that's, that's taking place, and I have some crimes that I think are really heinous, that need to be addressed and watched for, human trafficking, abducting children, things like that. We do have drug issues, but we see the police department making large arrests over large amounts of drugs, we have to stop that kind of activity. That's what's, what was said earlier about our children, these people come in, target young people. We just have to be careful with that. Weapons, a lot of weapons charges, if you watch the Montgomery County Sheriff's webpage, you can see the types of crimes that are taking place, what people are being arrested for. A lot of us need to just police ourselves, make sure that we're following the law, we encourage our children to follow the law, our family members to follow the law, and be active in our community, be a voice in our community that says, hey, watch what you're doing, be careful what you're doing. If you see someone, you know, that's about to commit a crime, I've had people come into my church, and, and I said, well, what drew you in today? And the man said, well, I was about to go out and commit a crime so I could buy my food, get me some food. And, you know, we're reaching out to those kind of people, we give away food, we're giving away clothing, just to try to help people get their morale up so that they don't commit crimes. And if we get involved, I think that would help a lot, whether it's with the police department, the sheriff's department, or, or just with the community in general. It would help a lot for us to do something other than just say, there's a problem, we have to be active. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. All right, Joe, tell us what you think about addressing crime in Clarksville.
All right, and I'm gonna have a flashback, when I attended Leadership Clarksville in 2017, and we had Law Enforcement Day, and we actually went to the police training camp, and we got our briefings, and then we went over to the jail, and we got our briefings over there. One of the things that come to mind is knowledge of the type of crimes, so making that aware, and then risk mitigation to the citizens, all right? And Chief Ansley did a very good job of that with his town hall meetings and his neighborhood meetings, just discussing the type of crimes, and then how do you mitigate risk? Another thing we need to look at, continual assessments, I mean, not just for the law enforcement agencies, but for community leaders. Continue to look at, as neighborhoods grow, as the population grow, we need to start looking at where our distressed communities are, and what are the indicators of those distressed communities? And then how do we engage from top down and from bottom up to make those things better? And what I mean by top down and bottom up are those collaborators, who are they? We all know that law enforcement are a huge part of that, but then what particular citizen groups that needs to be further engaged, and engaged often, to make sure that the right people are getting addressed? And then we also have to look at funding, right? The population grows, we look at new equipment for the police department, the opportunities for them to actually have enough personnel on staff so they can go to all these meetings. Because if they're pulling 12-hour shifts and they don't have enough manpower, well, then they can't just participate in a lot of community events, so they need more funding for things like that. And then really just get their buy-in, and get their buy-in often, as to what they see, what they see the needs are in the city, and then actually fund that. So that's my, my thing as far as crime. Again, like I said, I think the law enforcement agencies here are doing a very good job, and hats off to them. But again, a lot of that now should be upon us as citizens, and then as elected officials, and as stakeholders in this community.
Thank you, Joe. I know that Chris, Charlie, and I, we all wanted to thank you for your time here today, and thank you for making a decision to want to get involved in the community. I think I can probably speak for everybody on this call, on this meeting, when I say that Clarksville is a great place to live. And we just really appreciate that you want to be a part of helping make a difference in this community. So thank you, guys, for your dedication to Clarksville.
Thank you, thank you for having us.